Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our town hall tonight on a very special night. Um, Courtney, for everybody knows, going to be out for a couple of weeks. Um, Orange on the road, but on this day of the anniversary of the independence of Mexico, you might say is one of the new anniversaries of the independence of California. And just about 4:07 today, we got an important announcement. Orin, Orin, by the way, is rolling in a car. The hardest working man in the petition business is rolling down the state. Noran, I didn't know if you wanted to break this news or not.
Right here with you guys. Go ahead. I'm listening in.
Okay, Gordon and I have a lot going on. It was announced tonight, just so everybody knows, in this by the Secretary of State, our final count. And for everybody out there, a virtual woo-hoo, if you will, is in store. Tonight at 4:07 on oddly enough, the Mexican anniversary Independence Day, we have officially 1,719,543,000 signatures that are considered valid. So you guys know I gotta do it. Whether I like it or not, this is going to be on the ballot Gavin, and the games are more than officially beginning. And for everybody out there, and I say this so much, I think sometimes lose effect with me. What we now have accomplished is very, very historic. Bad management, as you can see over the years, like what we showed in the water crisis, which is now upon the state leads to bad things. Bad situations lead to bad things like we talked about earlier. We'll get into that with the Secretary of State's office kind of collaborating with big tech. But the reality is, we, the people, cannot and will not be stopped. And I want everybody to take a deep breath there, put your pump your fist in the air, do whatever you need to do to celebrate. Because we keep saying this journey has big milestones, and tonight is an especially big one. Officially, 1,719,000 signatures. So for those out there, by the way, one of the things I'm exceptionally proud of, and Susan, I'm exceptionally proud of you as I see you here, because every single county, all 58 counties have signatures that are reported. Understand that. For those that think, well, it's this, that, God bless Fresno, it's this. Every single county have what I will call a significant amount of their voting population turning signatures. We grossed over 2.1 million signatures and change. And I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but we know out there, they're probably going, well, how can we do here? What can we do there? We verified it close to an 80% rate. We, the people. God bless you all. Susan, I'm gonna break protocol a little bit and roll to you real quick. And I want you to say, talk about the volunteers. I mean, because this is just amazing.
Well, Mike, no doubt, we couldn't have done this without volunteers. Excuse me, I have allergies really bad right now.
Oh, you're just choked up, Susan.
That too. The bond, our volunteers were just amazing. They were absolutely amazing. We would not have reached this point without them. All our boots on the ground, all our regional managers, APs, volunteers, Mel Room, and you know what, our lead proponents, Randy Economy, just everyone involved. And if I left someone out, it's because my mind is spinning right now with the news. Tim Holiday for making our graphics for our French laundry and town halls. I mean, this was a group effort. This was a people's effort. And it was because we all came together and worked together that we made this happen. But you know what, Orin Healy, we wouldn't be here without you. Definitely would not be here without you. Your name is going down in history. You're in the books. You're probably on Wikipedia. Anyway, you guys, I just have the utmost appreciation for everyone that worked on this recall. But don't forget, we're not done. So we're going to a ballot probably in November. Don't set your sights on any particular governor until the deadline for everybody to submit their hats, put their hats in the ring. Then you can make your decision. But come November, it's all about recall, recall. Vote yes. Vote yes, right, Mike?
Absolutely. And that's really important as we move forward. And Sam, you put out an interesting comment, I noticed on the feed before the show, about what Don Dix is saying, and Don Dix, Chairman of the Riverside Republican Party, and part-time radio host, one way or the other. It is important that we don't play the game that the Democrats or Gavin Newsom basically is having us play. We need to focus on the issues. And tonight, we don't have any guests. Tonight, we want to focus on a lot of things that we need to talk about and make sure bubble to the top of the discussion list. This needs to be about the issues, and it need, we need to make sure over the next four to five months, that we continue to strive for funding. And I keep saying funding, because we need to do TV commercials. We need to continue with the radio show. We need to continue to buy more merchandise so we can gain more donations, because we can't do all this and not get a yes. And before I roll to Randy, I want to say again what I've said over and over again. It gets lost in the press and the news. That you keep hearing all these polls, wow, 52% of the people think Gavin approves of schools. 53.6% of the people approve of Gavin, the way he's handling this, that, and the other. That's fine. They interviewed different groups of people. But coming together, everybody has a different issue and different reasons. And we've got a lot more that we're going to talk about tonight. Why Gavin needs to be recalled. But here's really what the polls show. They show, and the Republicans, and Randy, you could talk up for that in a second, released another poll, about 40%, give or take, right now, would vote Gavin out of office. About 48% would vote to keep him in. What's getting lost in all this, in my not-so-humble opinion, is again, about 14% of the people haven't made up their mind yet. This is how California got into this hole. We have a huge chunk of people that just don't care. And 14% of 20 million voters is a lot of people. It's our mission, just as we set out on our mission at the beginning of this, spearheaded by Orin. It is our mission to make sure that people understand. You might like the way Gavin handles schools, strange to me, but roll with it. You might like the way that small businesses were shut down, strange to me, but roll with it. But overall, Gavin has so mismanaged this state in the lack of water, lack of resources, letting prisoners out of jail, behest payments, I'll get into later, spying on us basically with Facebook and Twitter. There are so many issues that come out every day, that some of the mainstream press won't truly report. It is our job, people of California, to make sure we finish this mission and get Gavin recalled. It's not about the candidates. It's about pulling Gavin out of office at this point in time. And it's going to be really exciting and interesting journey over the next four to five months. Randy, pay attention.
Hey, guys. Um, what a night. And I, I might, excuse me, but my phone is absolutely freaking. When I say blowing up, it is, it's blowing up with reporters from all over the country. From New York to LA to Sacramento to every place in between. They're just getting the news right now, because apparently it's already going on AP and CNN and Fox News. So congratulations to everybody. And when I say to everybody, I mean, every single person who is the true heart and soul of this campaign. And, and you know, remember, guys, our job's not done yet. We're just getting started. But tonight's one of those other nights that we will always remember and will cherish. And we're just going to work as hard as we do tomorrow and the next day and the day after. But I want everybody to just, you know, take a moment, like Mike said, and Orin has said in the past, and Susan, and Robin, and Dan, and everybody, you know, you guys, I just, you can't turn TV on now without somebody talking about the recall. And I don't care if it's at the local level, or if you go to Tron Talk Radio, or CNN, or Fox. And it's because of what each and everybody of you did out there. And, and you did something bigger than yourselves and ourselves, and you did it for the people. And I know it sounds a little hokey sometimes, but you know, when you, when you, when you're given a task, and you think, how do, let's try to figure out how to, how to put this together. You know, you guys, you did it. And you absolutely did it, and you did it, and you did it, and you kept doing it. And now we move on to the next phase of the campaign, which is tonight, and tomorrow, and Friday, and, and the next day. And, and you know, there's a lot of candidates right now who are breathing a complete sigh of relief, who want to be the next governor of California, because tonight, they realize that now they've got to go ahead and get their acts together. And it's because it's up to them now. And again, from the bottom of my heart, I'm still kind of the new kid on the block. I've only been here for six months. But with Mike and Orin and everybody who's been here since day one, I'm, I'm in awe of each of you. I'm in awe of each of the people on this, on this town hall. And we will continue to make history and have a barking dog here in the backyard.
Hoping that's a Republican dog. Not, although technically, when it comes to animals, except for the bear that John has, we are nonpartisan. Sorry, I just had to throw that in. And look, folks, it's going to get interesting, and it's going to get amazing, and it already is. And I see in the feed here, a lot of things before we even get into issues that I want to talk about tonight. Um, really take a deep breath, and I'm looking at these figures, and I'm, I'm just amazed. And it's not often for those of you that know me, and even those who don't. I'm amazed by math. And just the fact, looking up and down, really across the state, and understand when people talk about polls, and people talk about sampling groups. Two point, we turned in 2,161,349 signatures officially. That are 2,102, almost 2.2 billion to round it up, of people that consciously want Gavin out of office. That's with very little money. And Orin and I, and Susan, and Dan, and Tim, and all of us started with very little resource. The reality is, as I've said viciously sometimes, but it's true. This has been spurned by Gavin himself. And if 2 million people that we just got to, with very little money, very few paid petitions, only 126,000, signed to get Gavin out of office, imagine how many people really want to get Gavin Newsom out of office. Orin, are you still there? Well, I'm, Orin's rolling down in a car here. So I don't know if you want to say something or how to roll to your brother.
But I appreciate that. I just want to, you know, chime in and, you know, reiterate what you guys are saying. You know, there, there's a select group of volunteers that can't go unnoticed. And those are the folks who stuck with us, stuck with me, stuck with you from the beginning during the Aaron Cruz campaign. And those folks that, that had faith and confidence in our ability to lead and organize and, and get this done, it's extremely gratifying to be able to reward them with the news of today and the success that we were able to achieve together. It's extremely humbling and gratifying to be able to, to say that to you folks. You know, my hat's off to you, because there would have been no recall if you didn't stick it out. And, you know, trying to convince a group of people, hey, you just spent six months gathering signatures, and it failed, sorry, but we're gonna do it again. And then, oh, you know what, guess what? We did that for another six months, and, and we're gonna do it again. You know, we got the extension, and, and there's a lot of, there was a sigh of relief and dread at the same time. So people, people realized that, holy crap, the, with the extension, we're gonna get this done. We know we're gonna be successful, but at the same time, they also knew what that meant. And it meant another 120 days of the searing heat, the choking smoke, and, you know, pounding the pavement, getting the job done. And they did it. They did it. You did it, folks. Good job. Congratulations. This governor keeps giving us new and, and new egregious reasons every day to recall him, to remove him from office. Last week, he tweeted out that he wants to abolish the death penalty. Now that, mind you, I don't care where anybody sits on the fence as far as their personal beliefs about the death penalty. Here's a governor who went in and overrode the will of the people, suspended the death penalty, even in the face of a recent vote that the people had cast to not only maintain the death penalty, but to streamline it. This governor is going for broke. He's breaking California. And, and he has released 20,000 inmates already. Just announced that he wants to abolish the death penalty in totality on a tweet. And then four days later, he put out a statement that he intends to release 76,000 inmates early. 20,000 of those being on life without parole. His, his policies and his judicial reform and the reorganization of the prison systems will make Charles Ewing eligible to be unleashed back into society. This is a broken human being. He should never walk among us. He should have never been taken off of death row. But because this governor suspended the death penalty, and, you know, here's a, here's a man who has committed just horrendous crimes. Tortured people, murdered them, just in unspeakable manners. And, you know, Charles Ewing is sitting in a cell, smiling, and, and having the realization that, wow, I may get to go out and do it again. With that, it's never been more important to the future of the state, to secure a future that we can all live with, to remove this governor from office. He's out of control, and he need, we need to stop him in his tracks, recall him, and reverse the direction that he's taken the state for the last year and a half, or two years. God bless you all. I am driving. I'm cruising down I-5 right now. And I'm going to turn the show back over to you, Mike. Thank you so much for letting me, let me monologue for a minute.
Hey, Orin. Orin, we, we love you. And, and I know I tell you that every time I talk to you, and I think now more than ever, just thank you, Orin, for everything you've done. It's amazing.
Thank you, Randy. God bless. You guys, thank you, everybody, and enjoy the show.
I want to, I want to focus, thanks, on a couple of things that Orin said, and stay on the top of the crime and punishment, or lack of punishment for a second. We're asked, and Randy's asked a lot of the time, you know, there's a year left. How bad could it be? Why recall the governor now? Let's talk about a couple, we brush it all the time. It's okay. So let's get our arms around what Orin just said for a couple of seconds. Let me boil it down. So we voted in the death penalty a while back. Gavin assigns a negative, the will of the people. About that time, the court said prisons are overcrowded. You need to release some prisons. Okay, so we had a prison overcrowding problem from the court's point of view. About that time, we voted in a proposition called 57, that was called the Safe Neighborhood Act. Put it down, but we voted it in. Now, what's happened just a week ago, well, Friday, not even a week ago, is the State of California Political Prisons Commission, what Orin's referring to, took things, these prisoners were allowed to get out early for good behavior. That is something we voted on. Whether you agree with it or not, we voted on. What we didn't agree on was taking credits. And this was kind of slipped in under the wire, released on a Friday night, when of course you're listening to our radio show, not paying attention. It's literally when the news release came out. It basically says that somebody serving a felony, you can look up the chart, got two days, let's say, of early release for doing something which is practically nothing. That now doubled to four days for doing the same good behavior. This is going to allow, over the next couple of years, 76,000 prisoners to be released on the street. To Orin's point, many of them violent felons. What I found the strangest thing in the press release candidly. So we have safer prisons. All right, well, I'm a little confused here. What about us out in the public? We haven't done anything. How about safer for us? But there's more to that, because it's not all released at once. When I talked about how there was a court order putting a cap on the limit of our prisons, because we don't build new ones. In addition to releasing the 77,000, Gavin Newsom is closing prisons. Now get your arm around together everything that I just said. So by closing prisons, that reduces our capacity to house these people once they get out on the street, and many of them will probably commit crimes again. God bless us, hope not against us and our family. So now we're going to have the problem under a government order, not having nowhere to house them. So why are we doing this now? Because just the fact that Gavin Newsom is closing prisons reduces our capacity in California to put in jail the people that probably need the help that they get in jail. So I see the question out there from Roger, how can we stop him from destroying the state? We need to remind the public to vote yes constantly and every day. This is our legal right for free speech, which I'm going to talk about here, that we've had quash a little bit more than we know. And by the way, and I'm going to talk a lot tonight, sorry, because we don't have any guests, so deal with it. Understand what I talked about at the beginning, or the, what the segment talked about at the beginning of the show. If you're having, paying attention, it's very hard to keep up. We did this, even though we're on social media, without being able to advertise on social media. That was a well-known fact. However, what wasn't such a well-known fact, and Judicial Watch had put a Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, technically requesting, and got five hundred pages released of email conversations between Secretary of State's office, Facebook, Google, Twitter, talking about conversations, many of you might even be mentioned there, you'd be surprised, about posts that you put up that were your opinion. Now get your arms around that for a second. This started in 2019. This is not conspiracy theory. This is actual fact. And the State of California opened up portals, open communication. So when they, they literally comb the top headlines every day. I'm happy to say, starting in September, we made the top headlines, looking for stories where they could look for tweets and posts and other things, saying, hey, you know, we kind of disagree with this. Could you take that down? And even bugging the Facebook personnel to take it down if they weren't taking it down fast enough. And what strikes me is really scary about this, is there's a Cal Matters reporter, and by the way, God bless Cal Matters and NPR for a lot of the work that they do in the press, stating that the line of question the reporter is giving us, we're not comfortable with, because in effect, that person is asking for the truth. They did this under the guise, so you know, of the Election Espionage Act, a federal act, which is basically saying to keep people from hacking into our elections, not for monitoring our right to free speech. Now, there's 50 states in the Union, for those of you keeping track at home. I know they're working on DC, but right now, there's 50 states in the Union. California, as the biggest state with the Secretary of State's office, has been collaborating to quash our right for free speech. That's blatantly what it comes down to. They blatantly, and it doesn't matter if what was put up is right or wrong about election integrity. There's a lot of questions every week on that, and I'm going to, we're going to go heavily into that in next week's radio show and town hall, because I'm going to talk about that tonight. But the reality is, we have the right to disagree with our government. I'm pretty sure we have the right to disagree with our government. And the fact that big government is collaborating in California, what we are about here with big tech, I want you to really think about that. So another, we got this done with the Secretary of State's office, Gavin Newsom's office, watching us the whole time, every single post which has been put up. Think about that. And I, I don't care, me specifically, if we're doing it, they're doing it. Facebook is a private company, that's all in their story. But understand what we, the people, accomplished, why they were watching and aware of us the whole time. It is pretty powerful. Randy, do you want to add something to that?
I'm just sitting here in Afterglow. I had to go ahead and sign up, because I just got a phone call from Fox News in New York from, from a reporter, and they just called, they said, we don't, we're not calling for any other reason, just to say congratulations to Orin and Mike, and to everybody, and Susan. And I literally, they just called here on my cell phone, and I was just like blown away. When was the last time any, any reporter called just to thank, to congratulate us? It was from Fox in New York. I mean, so it's already getting out all over the country. So, you know, welcome to our world, guys. And, you know, we made history tonight. Again, once again, we're, we're changing California, and we're doing it. We're doing it because the people want it to be done.
Now, there's a thing, I'm going to answer some questions here before I go on to the next subject about the third.
What I am going to have to do is, Mike, I'm, Mike, I'm going to probably have to jump off the phone, because I'm getting, I have to do an AP interview, and then I've got to do a couple of other ones. So I'm going to have to probably log off.
Wait, wait a minute. Courtney's not on, Courtney's not on tonight. Orin's on the road. You have to log off. No, it's more time for me to talk. Randy, it's been fun.
I'm staying here, Mike. That's it. I'm putting you through torture.
Nobody wants to leave me unsupervised. Look, a couple of things here, I see about the Court of Appeals thing that came out today about Gavin's emergency powers. There's a lot of court things that have gone against him. And again, as I always say when we talk, understand something. Though we tend to focus on the court decisions a lot of the time, that might go in Gavin's favor. Shockingly, it's the California Supreme Court. But understand, once they get out of the California Supreme Court and go to federal court, like the fact he didn't have the right to shut churches down. Like right now, the electionintegrity.org lawsuit, we're going to focus on next week, is in federal court. The federal courts tend to rule in California's favor. But for we, the people out there, in a rightful, lawful manner, we have to take our state back. We have to rightfully and lawfully make sure this recall goes through. So a lot of times we focus, and this is kind of how Orin got me in this journey, if you haven't heard this before, the street term being sucked me in, Orin, sorry. Um, but the reality is this, okay? We have to have enough gumption, not be angry enough, but firm enough. And God bless the people that Orin referred to. There's Don, there's Aaron, there's Carla, there's Stella. There's lots of you out there. I can't possibly name them all, because there's literally thousands of them that have been doing this for so long, because we care. Even the press, like the Los Angeles Times, and I talked to the reporter today. Another subject I want to go to here. I want to cover a couple of subjects tonight, which is why I'm enjoying this airtime a little bit. So understand, we have the prisoner thing. Gavin is affecting our state going forward. We're not going to have the capacity to even reincarcerate the prisoners that we shouldn't be letting out. Let that sink in. Our state government has basically collaborated with big tech and understand that the Freedom of Information Act was only specific on the election. We are going to have to do a lot more requests and probably hire some lawyers, we, the people. Another little pitch for funding to get some more information. Another little pitch for funding to get some more information out of the government about what they're hiding to us. So one of. One of my pet things today, I got, I talked to the reporter who wrote about to be hested payments, Los Angeles Times. They don't tend to be too conservative. They tend to be a little bit liberal, but even the reporter was amazed. She's been writing for a year about these. Be requested payments by Gavin to charity. To put that perspective, how. Obnoxious it's gotten. I can't even think of a good word I can use on the air. Jerry Brown, for all eight years, requested or behested. Can't say the word, doesn't matter, about seventeen, eighteen million dollars over eight years. Gavin accelerated that in two thousand nineteen with about nineteen. In two thousand twenty, on his behalf. Two hundred and twenty-six million dollars was given to clauses for Gavin because they were over the campaign cap. By big companies, many were awarded contracts. And you've heard me talk before about this, when you talk about emergency powers, it's what you don't see a lot of the time. You didn't see SOS working with Facebook spying in your account. Let's call it what it is. You didn't see. Under emergency powers, contracts are awarded to these really big companies. And I want to find out the communication between these big companies. And Gavin Newsom, how did these payments get requested? You didn't see the contracts that weren't awarded. What do I mean by that? We focus on the big contracts like the Blue Shield contract for the vaccine, but looking through those hundred contracts. Many were awarded to janitorial companies that were big companies, some of them oil companies. I'm not making this up to clean up. And you, what you didn't see was that small companies, my background tells you that small companies could have did that, done those jobs. There were no bids for them. There was no open market. There was no capitalism, shocking. For awarding his contract, you didn't see it because those contracts weren't awarded. And many of you on this site and watching on Facebook. Could have had your companies bid on those contracts. Think about that. You didn't see or weren't paying attention maybe that just in February. You said, oh, great, Gavin's opening churches because he has to. He's opening businesses. But Gavin has requested those emergency procurement hours. Another year effective this February. Saying basically, I can award contracts to anybody I want. Some of them just so happen to be people. That. Put in to my campaign, nothing to see here. Some of them just happen to be people. That put into my favorite charities where my friends are on the board, nothing to see here. We have to get, continue the fight, keep unpeeling below the surface why we have the momentum. Both with money, lawyers. And everything else we can do to take back our state. No bid contracts, you're right, are illegal in a lot of cases, but nobody is challenging the governor on it. Because shocking, the legislature being eighty percent with his party is afraid to challenge Gavin Newsom. And that's just wrong. Also. And his use of emergency powers, I saw that, but the reality is, okay. When this rolls to federal court, many of these will get overturned, okay? And by the way, I see what you're talking about there in the feed as I'm trying to watch and talk. God bless Kevin, Kylie and James Gallagher for having the guts to stand up. Do you understand we're not going to win every battle, but you can't lose or win a battle that we don't fight? Let's be really clear on it. We through Orin elected to fight to get this recall on the ballot and nobody said we stood a chance. We have to continue to fight and push forward. Our Republican legislatures are doing the best they can. They're sorely outnumbered. I'm going to say most of them are. In fact, some Democratic legislatures, let's be fair, ain't so happy, fair, ain't so happy with Gavin either. So the reality is, we can't depend on legislatures and courts. We, the people, the biggest. Thing we can do to get the message across. Is yes, on the recall. We have opened up a window. Then election will probably be in late October or November. We, the people have opened up a window. We have a chance to talk about water. Or lack thereof. Power or lack thereof, wildfires, no lack thereof. Bad roads, no lack thereof, any issue that we, the people want to talk about. And there's going to be lots of candidates coming out. I don't really give a damn. We may end up supporting one, we may not, we don't know. What I do give a damn about is California. Tim, I see your face is showing and apparently.
Yes, so regardless if you signed the recall or not, you know, you still have the opportunity to vote to recall Gavin. So I just want to bring that forward. I, I saw that in my, um. One of my chat feeds here. And you, you, the people can still, you know, step forth to, you know, vote Gavin out of office.
And that's a really good point, Tim, you know, um. Anything else you want to add?
No, no, go ahead and carry it away, Mike.
I've been accused of cutting people off before and I probably will again, but I'm working on being more polite.
Well, carry on.
One of your nicer qualities.
Yeah, right. I don't have many, so it's good. At least I have one. Listen, Tim brings up a really important point. Election integrity is doing all kinds of things to help keep our election honest, including calling in some special masters. We'll talk about that later next week. But the biggest mistake. Californians can make is the I don't give a damn mistake. The reality is, I'm not going to rattle a lot of numbers with you and you folks there know I can. We have to get people to vote and vote yes. We have to get people to vote. A simple number is this. There were around thirteen million people that voted. Born against Gavin Newsom in the gubernatorial election. There's twenty-four million registered voters. There's about eighteen million that took place in the presidential election. Thirteen million of them voted in the gubernatorial election. Get your arms around that one second, everybody. Only thirteen million out of the eighteen million allegedly that got fired up to vote for the President of the United States. Just out of that sample group, five million didn't give a damn to vote for governor. Get your arms around it. It's up to us, the people, to make sure that people vote and vote yes. But I'm going to go back to the statistic I said at the beginning of the show. Forty percent, give or take, the polls moving around, want Gavin out. Forty-eight, forty-five percent say I'd probably keep him. Doesn't matter. There's fourteen percent which are undecided. And it's not just getting the fourteen percent to vote yes, it's making sure that damn fourteen percent. Vote. And I'm going to talk right now to Los Angeles. Because Los Angeles is the biggest block of voters with the worst turnout. People say LA is so liberal in a way it is, but that's because LA frankly, doesn't give a damn. So I'm challenging LA, by the way. We turned in three hundred and fifty thousand signatures, the most signatures of county. Woo-hoo, statistically, that's great. One of the lowest percentages and it took those LA volunteers, Dawn, Carla, Aaron, an amazing thing to collect those. It's a big diverse area and we know from the streets, that's an amazing task. It's still one of the smaller percentage of registered voters. Think about that. Because the people in LA, God bless our volunteers there because they tend not to participate. Every county everywhere that participated in the recall. We need that times about four to get this governor out of office. Our work is truly just beginning because we've opened a historic door. And we have to make sure that we go through that historic door. Engines running full speed ahead, everything that we could do. With every ounce of energy that we have to make sure that we get people to vote yes. Um, I'm going to look real quick at the feed. If you have questions here, we have about five minutes left. I'm getting a lot of questions about will we consider a candidate? We might. Right now, I want to take a moment again and thank everybody out there for all the work that you've done. Understand, this is truly something historic. And when sometimes when you're in the moment. When you're in the moment. Okay. It's hard to realize without taking a step back what historic thing Orin has led and we've accomplished. Angela, before we go to you, or no, they probably won't research your Facebook posts. So, Orin, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, you know, one of the, one of the things, there's a lot of. Different dynamics to Gavin's release of these prisoners. Uh, it, it's affected, it's going to affect our state in a lot of different ways, very negative. We al- already have the highest homeless rate. This is going to increase. The homeless problem. He's not solving problems. He's creating more problems. It's going to overburden. Our court system with new crimes because a lot of these people are going to go out and they're going to reoffend. But one of, one of the. Worst things, if that's not bad enough, is the fact that this governor. Has released the bulk, if not the entire. Crew of the CDC fire crew as we enter a, a new fire system. A new fire season. Uh, we no longer have that resource available to help fight these wildfires. The CDC fire crew had an upwards of, you know, ten thousand inmates. Well, he's already released twenty thousand and those were of the best. Inmates and the CDC crews, probably the first to go because they were the ones that are, you know, were already proven best behavior, et cetera, et cetera. You know, so. Not only do we not have that as a resource, but. We have to make up for that void that he left by releasing these folks. And, uh, you know, that's, that's going to be extremely expensive to the taxpayers. So when you look at, you know, the expense of this election going forward, that's. A lot of people raise that as a concern that it's an expensive election cycle. Um, I look at it as a cost-saving measure. We have to remove this governor to, to stop the bleeding. To, uh, you know, to stop the free flow squandering of our tax dollars. Uh, you know, his release of the CDC fire crews is, was a blatant power grab by the unions. And the fire unions just came out in strong support of Governor News- Newsom. Yesterday, they flew in a, uh, Boston Fire Union captain. You know, to come out and testify on his behalf at this press release. What the hell a Boston Fire Union bus. Uh, has to do with the recall of the governor? I have no idea, but they came out in opposition to the recall. Shocker. Uh, they stand the most to gain by this governor's release of the CDC fire crews. Because now we're going to have to hire unionized laborers to take their place. That's it.
So everybody out there, if we, I see.
Orin, 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 real quick, where are you, where are you right now physically? Where are you exactly right now?
Santa Neela, Gustin, I five.
Can you flip your camera around to show everybody where you're at, just for the visual? There you go. That's California, baby.
Well, I want to add on to what Orin was just saying. We're not going to have to just tire on the, um, fire crews for. This coming fire season, but following fire seasons as well. So just keep that in mind, people.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. Everything has long-term implications. So we have things that are in the moment. As we draw a closer, I want to make a couple of points. We have things that are in the moment, things that Gavin has done, things we don't control and things that have long-term implications. You could put them all together. We can mix them up. You could do whatever you want. We have to get this done. Everybody out there, if you have questions, we have an answer tonight. Again. Reason we ask for funding is we're trying to stay in our radio show. Call in. One eight hundred two 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 five two two two. Call in Friday night. We're not doing this just to be on the air. We're doing this for us, we, the people. We know we need a brochure, as we call it. We're working on that now, a small group of us, thanks to Ellen who put one together, Ellen from the valley, as we call it, all right? We're working on that now, too. That requires funding to everything we do requires just a little bit of money. And I'm not sitting here begging you for money, but we're saying, tell your friends and spread the word. We spent a lot of time talking to each other here. It's like religion. We need to grow this times three, but tonight. We have done it, my friends, and I want to end the show on that. One million. Se- one million, seven hundred thousand and nineteen signatures plus. We are on the ballot and we are going to take California back. And anybody who gets in the way of doing that will be to them. Susan, any final words? You're on mute, so if you do. Susan, you're on mute.
Ah, yeah, sorry. No, I was going to say something, but I totally forgot what it was.
That's okay, Susan. The only thing I remember is that I'm absent minded. You're ahead of me. I can remember that.
We have ordered a lot, lot of supplies for phase two. We have flags. Did you, did you discuss this? Because I had to step away for a minute.
We discussed a little bit. We have merchandise. We have merchandise available for volunteers. We're going to talk about it again. I wanted to make tonight a little bit about some issues. Why I have the chance to do a soliloquy. We have merchandise. It's going to be available on our website. We've got some key volunteers. We've got the radio show. Uh, we've got lots of ways we're doing, working on a brochure, a trifle. The reality is, my friends. We take a deep breath. We continue to have a battle, a long one in front of us to take back this state. We're going to do it through things like this behind us, like Randy was just showing on screen. We're going to do merchandise we sell, brochures, talk shows, radio, TV, like Randy's doing. But more importantly, we're going to do this with we, the people. And the cause which spearheads it all. There's a lot of grifters. There's good causes, bad causes, upside down causes. Recall Gavin twenty twenty dot com is the brand that we created. To get all these signatures. Recall Gavin twenty twenty dot com. You can't go wrong. By buying merchandise from us or donating to our cause because it's we, the people.
We definitely do need the donations. For airtime, the French laundry, it's thousands of dollars each week. So please, if you can afford it, if it's in your heart, please send a donation. Look at our website, recall Gavin twenty twenty dot com. Look for the donate button. And also Jeffro Dan is doing a movie about the recall. And it's on every one of our groups, but. I'm going to get you the site if you give me just a minute. I'm sorry.
Also, if you sign up.
Movie dot com. Let me look.
Yes, recall Gavin movie dot com.
Right. If you could donate to him, he is spending almost all of his time to create a movie about this recall. And he could definitely use. The donations and Ron Mile Meyer, tell us the plan. Stop the BS. Tell us the plan.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to answer that one on the air. Ron, we are the plan, okay? And if you're not going to contribute, everybody out there, contribute to the plan. This is uncharted territory. If you're depending on the leaders. To come up with a magical plan, we got here with a collaboration of the people. I was just actually typing them back. If you have something to suggest that can help us with the plan, anybody out there, we're happy to hear it and happy to do what we can. But we're people who started this who are not politicians. We're ordinary citizens changing the state.
Being BS about what anyone is saying here. If we were BSing everyone. Did we just BS two million Californians? I don't think so. We wouldn't have gotten here through BS. We have been honest upfront about every step of the way.
The merchandise, thank you, Susan. I'm going to kind of bring this to a close here. The merchandise is going on the site next week. You can email us at info and we'll get some to you. We just got it in. It's a lot of work. Thank you, don't be the trolls, good answer. On our radio show on Friday nights to let you know there, we think there's somewhere between seven and nine thousand people listen to it. There's literally some weeks like nine thousand people watch this. Well, I'm calling now a podcast, it goes here. The numbers have been growing since the beginning. More importantly, factual, I do want to end on this before we go down rabbit holes. We have verified one million, seven hundred signatures, well over the under 1.5 million that we need.
Yep.
So may I have the permission to say this? Whether or not, it's going on the damn ballot, whether you like it or not, the people of California have four months to talk about the issues. And we will decide what the plan is and how we're going to move forward. Not our government, not the courts. We, the people of California have done it and we're taking our state back. Power to the people, thank you very much. God bless you all, good night. See you on the radio, 79 KABC this Friday. Orin's driving down for that, it's going to be a very special show. And next week, we're going to talk about election integrity. God bless you all, we did it, California, and we're going to continue to do it. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Orin.